Wow, I don't think so.
Nobody knows. I had a case of case that he's cabin.
Okay, you do.
Yeah, did you like it?
Hmm, so then the farmer's tile. There's a box there now. Your Friday, the tile called me and says, hey, you got these signs up here. He says, uh, do you want me to check that tile? And I said, oh, I suppose.
Yeah, see, you brought the wash with you again.
They don't move.
So nobody says hi to you, so I'll say hi to you.
Glad he made it. Our employees this morning.
Oh, was poaching him?
You're poaching him. Okay, good job.
You still stop poaching, so I had to go. Do we owe you money now?
I swear.
Yeah.
They told me they spent ninety-nine.
The better contractor.
I said, to the best. We went over top. But I said, it's a deep in the back. Down low, so I'll wait you up and check. So he was a super nice guy. He said they started up there. Well, he first started up by the substation. He said they had five lines for them before.
By chance, do we have a picture of what I just briefly said?
Was you up there?
Just setback issue?
Yes, you were. I'm not saying it was my operating right up there.
Oh, we missed you.
As you get up there.
Well, I'm like kids. Oh, instead they were probably all two.
I think she might be.
Some of us really don't like celebrating themselves enough. That's the problem is going to be their job. She didn't go.
She said she's all right.
Well, she probably didn't want to go without you or something. I don't know. I don't know what she did.
All she did was give us the address. I think.
Yeah.
I've got a name and that's it.
They had a hand to keep it moving.
Literally.
Question. Heather will probably have to answer this. So boldly, we can get out of an agreement, win the agreement. I was told no. They said, is there anything out there? I said, no. Then well, there never will be. I said, well, I won't have. And I told me no.
And who is the person that you talked to?
I don't know.
Looked at these two, since you guys got probably better contacts, who else could he reach out to? So I gave you Kimberly Dickies, right?
Kimberly was. I talked to her once and she gave his fine name to him. And I, I don't know who he is.
I wouldn't wonder two.
One.
This is phase one. Cause we got that agreement. Was there a timeline on it?
Was, but.
Not that it's in the years.
At the end of the years. Yeah, it was a longer decent. I mean, you should be within that timeline, but.
Did they say why?
He just said no, but he was gonna ask him. Kimberly, so I, and it was gonna get back to me, but he never did.
So basically, they, they wouldn't be able to say no if there was nothing, if this was just the wind blowing over, but they had lines going through the property or anything like that or.
Okay. So I didn't know what you guys agreed to.
Okay, it should be in there that if there's nothing on there, you should be able to get out. At least in good faith, they have to try to do that. So if you wanna, who wants to take that up for Roger? You could ask, can you give them David Turner's number or vice versa, give David?
Whoever you talked to.
Well, I'll talk to Kimberly. That'd be the easiest.
Well, the one that you talked to would be the easiest.
And maybe.
I don't know who he was.
Maybe write down what parcel it is for David too.
There's my phone number.
What parcel and area that way. I mean, I'm sure this person, they would know, but.
I got it.
Yeah, let us know.
And you were, and you got my personal, well, you know, that one. But yeah, I, I'd like to know. You know, reasons.
It's no big deal, but I mean, I just don't want. You filed it at the courthouse, so it's gonna be on there forever.
Yeah.
The five hundred dollar, whoa, you get a free five hundred dollars. Whoa. Nothing's free.
Yeah, let us know when we, when we put our name on something. I want it to mean something. I want them to follow through. So people should be able to get out if there's nothing on their land. That's what we agreed.
So yeah, they give you the parcel number that's affected. I mean, if you've got it memorized, we talk after.
We'll have to look it up.
Okay. I'll chase it.
Thanks, David.
Yep. Anybody else? Wish to speak. Okay, what close of above the comments? Discussing approved eleven three twenty-five of the regular missions.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded into discussion on. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Look, look. No been yet.
Um, that's not.
He's sorry. He's his report.
Do I have audio? Oh, I do, apparently. Um, so yeah, I, um, we're digging, um, working near two hundred and sixtieth and B Avenue. Um, and then also on south of E sixty-six on V Avenue, digging some ditches. Um, all our trucks have snow fronts on them. Um, we had a kind of a little bit of a scare there, I guess, of just letting us know that winter is here. Um, that's, it's coming up, so, um, we didn't have any trucks out, but, um, just wanted to get prepared. So have our snow fronts on, um, all our trucks, um, on to Panda. We're waiting on the grow, guard rail. Um, that should be done sometime later this week. Um, they'll plan on closing that for a day so they could just get, work on both sides to just finish it up. So, um, probably, um, a road notification coming out to, um, people. Um, we'll put on our Facebook and let people know. So, um, they're on S Avenue. Um, we're just waiting for them to pour the open rail. Um, and then Manats, they finished their first, first lift of asphalt. Um, and they'll be placing the surface this week. Uh, probably, um, I don't know. Today, today's weather will be decent enough or not. Um, the surfer, surface temperature of the asphalt will need to be forty degrees. So, um, if they're able to do that today, they might, um, go ahead. But, um, it looks like later this week, we'll have better weather for that. So, um, and then, let's see. And then I have a, um, final plans for E twenty-nine, um, replacing a, a bridge there. Um, uh, yeah, trying to, I guess, right now it is a one lane, one truck only, uh, bridge. Um, we're looking to replace it so we can get it, get it back in shape. And so we don't have it, uh, any posting of any sort on it. Um, will be a, let's see. I think a hundred and, hundred and twenty foot, um, thirty foot wide, wide bridge. So, um, I think we've already done the funding agreement for this, so, um, didn't know if you had any more questions or not regarding that. Um, it's just east of, east of QQ Avenue. That's all I got. So, I, if you, if you guys have any questions, uh, I'm not hearing your audio.
Does that start?
Oh, there it is.
Yep.
Got to go off the bit yet.
Uh, the project should take, um, I think it'll probably, it'll probably be similar to, uh, the one, um, just west of, on business thirty, it'll probably be two to three months, um, more likely. I guess it'll probably be more like three or four months, um, for them to kind of finish that project up, so.
Right, start.
But do, do we know when this project would start?
Um, no, not at this time. We, the, the, I do not have any, um, like the late start date on that yet. Um, we'll get that information once the project is let, so. Um, they kind of get the, all the information to the DOT and then they find out what projects are, have been in the lettings and kind of, um, get a timeframe on, um, when those projects will be let. I would assume, or not let, but built. I assumes either start of spring or, um, summer, but, um, depending on when they put the late start date. I know for these last few projects, they put them in August. So then, um, um, right now, it's just, uh, we have a detour that's gonna be, you know, you're gonna have a, I think, three mile detour around, so. I miss an audio again. I cannot hear David. I cannot hear anyone. Apologize.
It's a cost gonna be to do that then, you know, which again, it might be beneficial. I don't know.
Yeah, there, there I heard it. Yep. So what was the question?
The, the question was, how, is this going to impact harvest? In other words, not necessarily the timing, but if it goes in harvest, will this route detour affect first trying to get stuff to market or to the fields?
And there'll be detour around three miles, um, on gravel.
Just going to affect the harvest of the maintenance during that time period?
What, what was that again?
To know how much this will impact harvest if it happens during that timeframe.
I, if they have to, they're gonna have to drive three miles out of the way to go around. I guess I don't, I don't know what.
Okay, so it's going to be like K Avenue issue? That's my question.
That's your question? Okay. Um, the thing would be, I guess, if we need to apply dust control for those individuals, um, we'd, we'd be, we'd do that, so.
The summer instead of in the fall. That's what he's trying to get at, I think.
If, if we can get it done in the summer, I, I would like to. Uh, I can specify the late start date, so it's in May, you know. Um, so the DOT usually gives me those late start dates. Um, I, I can see what, when they give it to me, I'll, you know, try to get them in May, so then it'll be done in the summer. So. It depends on how many bridges and whatnot they have, that sometimes with bridge contractors, they'll move it back to August or whatnot, just to make sure that. Um, but I will try to get it, you know, the late start date in May to try to help with harvest, so.
Sixty-three closed because won't people be taking K Avenue up to twenty-nine? Or somehow they won't be able to take sixty-three across on twenty-nine? Won't that all be closed next year?
Yes, yep. So you're meaning, yeah, they won't be coming that way anyway because sixty-three is gonna be out anyway. That's a good point.
When does sixty-three close up?
I would assume in the spring there, it's gonna, you know, I mean, when they did it south of here, I think it took almost spring to fall pretty much to get it open and they're tearing that whole area out and putting passing lanes, so.
Are they taking out twelve miles?
All the way from Toledo to ninety-six, sixty-three intersection, yeah.
And the roundabout's going in about the same time.
You know, you're dating. He wears church one Sunday and now you're nasty.
You're ready to take gravel or go straight.
Just get out of town.
You mean you're around about my K Avenue and State Street, right on my truck.
Yeah. All right, I won't give this. How many more should we approve the plans for? Our final plans for BRS dash C zero eight six, print says one nineteen dash sixty dash eighty-six for the bridge replacement on E twenty-nine, then allow the board to decide.
I'll say okay.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. They need discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Question carries?
We all just.
Yeah.
It's fun.
Yeah. It's. Get to that here. This could be the reverse.
I don't know who you're the IT guy.
Boom. Boom.
Good point. We're still early this morning.
But you got it.
It's obvious.
Like, it wasn't a monkey. AV.
Yeah.
I don't see it. More pointers. Pointers.
You should.
Here, here. Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I sit right here. Snow on some cars out there. They always have sense to be sunny this week.
Yeah.
Problems.
As it should be.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you. First and foremost, Lacy couldn't join us this morning. Unfortunately, she had a bit of a family emergency, so. Talked to her on my end, so she, uh, said hello to everybody. She's okay. So, just a family member was, uh, in an accident, so, well, it happens. It wasn't in Tama County though. I want to make sure that, uh, is on the record, so. Again, good to see you. Um, as I customarily do, I like to start off these discussions, just, uh, if food for thought, anything concerns, uh, of employees? How is the plan working? I would probably have a con do it to Michelle and her team and like the, rest my sincere appreciation for her patience with us and working through things, so. Anything top of mind?
So.
No, my. Um, so just kind of just do a refresher. At the end of the day, uh, the county is the insurance company for your medical and prescription drug program. You hire a TPA, which is a third-party administrator to adjudicate the claims and accordance to the plan that you guys have built for your employees. As I customarily said, your health plan is great economic development for your communities in Tama County because, um, you have a very rich benefit. Your employees deserve to have rich benefits. You have collective bargaining agreements that dictate deductibles, out-of-pocket expenses and things of that nature. Um, yeah, at the same time, uh, the majority of your claims, uh, or the majority of the costs are going to be your expenditure. So roughly about twenty percent of your planned costs are for filling ID cards, having access to doctors, um, the services, the value-added services that we have. So the reports I put together is just where are we at year-to-date and kind of just put together some general projections. State of the industry, as you may have heard, uh, there's just a lot of utilization out there, a lot of chronic conditions that are being treated. Um, Tama County has been really forerunners of trying to modernize their health plan over the years, even though your deductibles are historically low compared to non-public entities, you kind of fall on the same wavelength as those folks. But, um, you guys did, uh, take a leap forward in covering, for example, weight loss medications. And you might have heard in the news, last couple of days, that, uh, the Trump administration is now negotiating better prices on those medications for the Medicare and Medicaid population. Um, I'll be honest, I was sitting on the fence as to whether or not these medications like Wegovy and Ozempic and Zepbound, which we're seeing on every other commercial these days, whether or not they were gonna have a long-term impact on the plan. So, um, as we look at your costs and expenses, a lot of times I get people saying, what can we do to lower our costs? What can we do for maybe a wellness standpoint? Again, you folks have been on the forefront of being, you know, modernistic in terms of your, your approach. You've done stroke screening, analysis, um, you can help people to go to, um, the emergency room when they have a true emergency. You have real code base in that regard. And you also have this thing called a teledoc or doctor on demand. I don't know if anyone's ever used that here. Really handy because you all know that Tama County is the biggest county in the state of Iowa that does not have a hospital. And we've done a great job at dismantling our primary care in our country. To the tune of, we actually find million Americans do not have access to primary care. So, fully incumbent on county for having the vision to, um, a low cost share for their emergency room services. They have a great medication, prescription drug card, and you have also, um, access to telemedicine, which is so, as many of you know or don't know, he used to be a Tama president, Dr. Willie. I don't believe he's even practicing, sadly. And we've lost a lot of those. So you guys have committed to do what you could to keep chronic conditions down. You guys modernized your plan a couple of years ago by putting those GLP-one drugs on your, your plan. And I do believe at this point, since I'm no longer a fence sitter, uh, that this is gonna provide you the opportunity to, to manage chronic conditions. Because obesity is one thing, but people losing weight also helps, uh, situations with people that have, um, diabetes or um, joint disorders, which are two big drivers. So with that, I put together where we're at year-to-date. I'm gonna try to give you some general projections of where I see things, but understanding just the state of the industry, there's a, a lot of intensity that's out there. If you're reading up on the industry and dealing with it every day like I am, uh, we're just seeing a lot of planned intensity. Uh, trends are out, are high, uh, prescription drugs, of course. And then there's the, um, aging population side of things that's driving the cost. We've got some great technologies. We're living longer than ever, uh, and it's certainly been drivers on there. We will go out to market. Uh, you were at the beginning and the end of your two-year agreement with Health Partners. They provide you a two-year aggregate contract, which is one of a kind in the industry. Um, Health Partners, I think, has been a good partner for the county. And, um, it's also, it's like a little sidebar here. You might have read or heard or gotten a letter in the mail that you already pointed, Health Partners are parting company, but that means nothing for your employees. So we'll have new ID cards in January. Sure, I got that out. But Health Partners has been a, a really, um, a, a great organization to work with. If you know, uh, a little bit about Health Partners, they actually have thirty thousand employees. They're based out of Minneapolis. They come from hospitals, so. They really are an integrated health plan and they've been a good partner for the county. We've worked with them in several areas and they've done a good job at, uh, office and claims and keeping the noise down when we need it, when someone needs a, a medicine or needs a treatment. So with them, to.
Good question for your side.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
When would the stroke screening be due? What's the date?
Get to look at you. When you've, because you have a stroke detection boss that I think is the company that you.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, Timmy was to death. We probably should get with Paul and talk with him and do a camera. Stephen.
Yep. Do we get a bit of pin out or health insurance for doing that?
Well, certainly, they won't give you a discount because then you are the insurance company, right? So the best savings you can get is a plan that doesn't happen.
And lots has been caught using that. We've got major.
Oh, yeah.
They's caught.
Is it cancer screening too, or just stroke tier everything?
Well, it, it covers a variety. I know we have caught, uh, cancer due to it being a thyroid issue, cancer. I know we have caught, um, uh, you know, stop where somebody could have had a heart attack. It's cause, um, there was an aneurysm. So, I mean, we've had some very major things caught by doing that.
That been a yearly thing, has it?
Usually every two.
Every two. This is just employees or spouses too?
Employees and spouses.
Spouses. Yeah.
That's a really good point because, of course, let's do an employee wellness plan, it's like, unless you get the, obviously, kids are gonna get stroke detection. I mean, that's hopefully gonna be caught in a pediatric, but getting it.
Yep.
Getting that.
Because they're all on the same coverage, so it still affects the, yep.
Yep. Exactly. That's a good question. Yeah, if you need some help, that's a contract that you have in the, that let me know. But stroke detection plus has been a huge value for us. And, and this is also reminded that your health plan provides for a hundred percent preventative services for people to give your annual checkups or mammograms. Um, if you're age forty, um, colonoscopy, uh, while, while baby exams, immunizations, vaccines, et cetera, are all covered at a hundred percent. So we want to promote people. That's foundational, right? About primary care and the need for that. So we'll go to page, uh, two. The information that we have, um, is obviously HIPAA protected, so we're not getting into details here, given our experience. So if you see the enrollment contracts, that's the total employee count. Now we know that there's, as I like to say, there's doorbells and belly buttons, right? So the doorbells are the employees and then the belly buttons would be, uh, the remainders, uh, of the population. They could be a child, spouse, et cetera. So that represents your employee headcount. Okay, so with, in the medical, you can see where we're at so far. Um, I like having four months because it begins to tell us a picture of how your plan is performing. Uh, pharmacy continues to be a big driver on your health plan. It's almost fifty percent of your, your medical spend, as you can see. And then I also threw the dental because you have a plan that's embedded with each other, so I just threw the dental claims in there. Then we have this thing called stop-loss recovery. So while the county provides insurance, uh, benefits to employees and they pay the claims, there's also a good idea to have what they call a stop-loss contract. So when a claim exceeds fifty thousand dollars, for example, that's when the reinsurer steps in. At this point in time, you've had seventeen thousand dollars. So that's, represents a person that had a claim over fifty thousand dollars or a couple. And I have some more details on that. That's a very valuable piece of, um, insurance to have for you. And you'll see that with historical perspective. And then we tip, we put the total, uh, so this is gonna be just really for your, your, your medical expenditures for medical, dental and pharmacy. You'll see that on the right-hand side. And again, I broke down the chart at, at the, uh, bottom there. You can see where the dollars are going.
Real quick question on that. Uh, I noticed it's like a two-month cycle. It was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, then two-hundred, then a hundred and seventy-eight, three-hundred. Is that normal or is that just how it happened to lay up this time?
Just it, it's, it's, it's latter part of your answer there, yeah. Um, you obviously had a big, through October, um, you had, you had a big month.
And winter will probably be higher with the sicknesses and stuff, probably, or not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
You'll usually lower cost stuff, though, I guess.
Yeah, writing folds and things like that, sure. Sometimes people know that they've hit their out-of-pocket maximum deductible and they schedule surgeries when they.
Yeah, maybe.
That's everybody. On you, so, you know, people are, like, they like going on vacations in the summer, maybe schedule their surgeries towards the end of the year.
The one claim is for sixty-seven thousand dollars. That bumped up October, right?
I have, yeah, I have some details on the, 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 yes, it would be on page nine. Again, no names are shared, just let me know what the diagnosis is. So that one claim reached the stop-loss. If there's good news on that, it's because some. If there's good news on that, it's because sometimes in the insurance industry, you look, you look at things a little bit different perspective. This would look to me to be a high-cost claim that's going to recover. And you can see your larger claims are the ones that are taking the high-cost medications. You can't choose your parents. There's some great medications that are out there and there's these things called biologics that are very expensive. So I'll talk about strategy here in a little bit about what are some of the things we can look at. So we go back to page three, just show you where you're at year-to-date. If we just, year-over-year, quarter-over-quarter, you're about thirty percent higher than you were at this point in time. So four months does not, or sorry, two quarters does not make a year as you start July first. And I've got some trends where you're at, your trending costs, which will bring things more into reality. And I'll talk about projections. However, I think it's good to point out the power of your stop-loss contract because if you were on the NASDAQ or you're fund manager and Wall Street, you probably wouldn't keep your job because they've lost a lot of money on the stop-loss. So you can see the paths, why it's important to have protection over fifty thousand over the years. Twenty-two, twenty-three was a stringly high year. And those are dollars that are paid by an insurance company for those large claims as opposed to coming out of your coffers. So. So from a year-over-year, I said thirty, it was actually forty-one, year-over-year. Now, don't let that, don't throw the baby out in the bath water because we don't look at overall trends. Thanks, Paige. Just did some benchmarks where you're at. Again, you're having unusually high years, so that somewhat tips the scales to look like you guys are way higher. You have better benefits than most organizations, even in the public sector. Then you have to look at things. Globally for Tama County, you don't have a hospital here. You know, you, the economic development that your plan provides to the employees is good because the money ends up staying in your community as opposed to going to shiny boats of orange healthcare systems, right? So there's some consumerism protection for you. Or I think it's important to point out is, is your trends up about eight percent. We didn't have the data loaded in for the second quarter on the, on the public administration, but I can tell you on the federal side, we're seeing eight to ten percent increases right now. So that's going to be trend inflation. Cost of care this year is a dollar, for example, and next year it's going to be a dollar eight. Okay, you haven't leveraged your trend by increasing deductibles and out-of-pocket expenses and co-pays. Again, that's a delicate rule because you have collective bargaining. So that is something that would be a strategy to discuss. I will tell you, though, under the Affordable Care Act, one of the biggest provisions in there, besides no pre-existing conditions, was that now health plans have unlimited lifetime maximums. Some of us in this room might remember that when you had a standard Blue Cross Blue Shield United Healthcare Contract, you had a half a million dollars of lifetime expense. You then had a million and then they started one-upping each other. Then it went to two million, then it went to five million. And the ACA provided that anybody covered under a medical plan would have an unlimited lifetime maximum, whether they're grandfathered, which you are. We understand grandfathering, right? So you have not made any changes on your health plan as far as deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, out-of-pocket maximum, all the things that we made up as language in our business. Point is, is that your health plan has been really protected from some of the things that the non, or the ACA non-grandfathered plans have. So in plain English, your plan hasn't changed since on or before March twenty-third, two thousand ten, as honest the employees experience. And the other point I want to get to is, is if you think that your deductibles are going to save you money, tie it all together here, it really isn't going to show up in your underwriting. Why? Because you went from maybe a half million or a million dollar lifetime maximum to unlimited. So if an underwriter is looking at your risk and says, well, they're willing to put on another thousand or five hundred dollars under the deductible against an unlimited lifetime maximum, it's going to do very little, okay? Just kind of, yeah, we'll look at that. Certainly will be one of the option points. So if I'm looking at budgeting where your plan is that this year is doing nothing or new as is, there is definitely a benefit to being grandfathered. I'll give you an example as of last week with an individual that is suffering with a major brain cancer. And they have a clinical trial. They're a non-grandfathered ACA plan, you are grandfathered. When you're a non-grandfathered, members have the right to go to what they call an external appeals process. The external appeals process was done for this individual and came back and said that the group needs to pay for this clinical trial. As I said earlier, sometimes it's dehumanizing to talk about these things, but this is not, this is a experimental treatment that has not shown the, has not proven to work. The treatment for this is twenty thousand dollars a week. And on an external appeals process, if it's approved, then you don't have stop-loss. If you catch my drift, that could really drain your dollars, okay? So you guys have that. You want to plan, you have the finisher is to say, we don't see the empirical data to support something like this. And you're well with it, right? You said, I'm just saying you lose that right when you wish your grandfathering. So if I'm projecting forward, based on where you're at, not changing anything, I would say that the board should book an eight to ten percent increase over their rates at this point in time. I'll be back in February with another report. In addition to that, I will be going out to the market. It might be a fiscal year to look at narrowing your networks. Years past, we had an HMO in here, it provided some savings, some education in that. We'll help you with that, but if you live in Iowa and receive your care in Iowa, we got a heck of a plan. If you have an emergency outside the state of Iowa, by federal law, it's going to be covered as though it happened in Iowa. Check mark. We've got Doctor On Demand, right? So if Kurt is in Honolulu, Hawaii, celebrating his wedding anniversary.
You strike three.
Yeah. Okay, well, just go with this for us.
Yeah, I'm going with you.
But you have a situation where you, you're not feeling well. So you're like, well, I'll get on my mobile app and say out of the phone, talk to Doctor On Demand. They give me my medication. So kiddos going to school outside the state of Iowa, we hear about that. Hey, snowbirds are in the room, right, in your employee population. If they go to Arizona for the, for the winter, then you can also enroll in, they call guest services, like the students. So there might be some, some savings on that. We're not married to Health Partners because who's the insurance company?
We are.
You are. People often say, oh, my health insurance is to Health Partners. It says Tama County on your card for a reason, you're the insurance company. So we can do a lot of things, okay? And one of those pharmacy benefit management. Looking at page, I think we're page six now. So I just did an eighteen-month trend line and, yeah, you're kind of running. This is where my underwriting hat comes on. Say, this is where we're at, so we're not seeing that trend line go up dramatically at that juncture. Okay, and I wrote it down for medical and prescription. Hold your prescription trend lines, yes, they're, they're eking up there. You know, my, my new joke is, it might be my last one, is instead if you can sing the song, you can't afford the medication. Okay, so just seeing a huge mercenary pricing in the prescription drug market. And there's been some people that have gotten very creative. Which I'll share with you, I like to show up to the calculator first before I say how great that's going to be. And you're running about eighty-nine percent on page eight of your aggregate, which means that you have two layers of stop-loss. You've got, okay, we know that we're covered over fifty thousand dollars. What happens if we go over what we call the aggregate maximum? So let's say you had, your population had a billion dollars in medical claims. Essentially, the bleeding stops at, you know, three-point-five million dollars for your plan. That's all going to be protected by what we call aggregate insurance, okay? We've been on page nine. I don't see anything that has me scared. Your plan is just really the victim, like most other plans, of claim intensity, people are using it. But again, hold through the medications they need, getting well. Fact that you have the GLP-1s puts you guys an exclusive company. Because I think you're going to have more employers going to jump on that. So we're all kind of part of this grand experiment right now, right? Does this make a difference? Because those medications are certainly the biggest driver of your, of your, if you drug one, I'll show you that in a minute. And I've shown you historically in the plan years, your medic, or your, your claims exceeding twenty-five thousand. Obviously, you see twenty-two, twenty-three, you had a real doozy. Your large claims are not driving your cost, that's, that's, that's good news from an underwriter's standpoint, right? So we'll be back here in first of April with the final renewal with Health Partners and anybody else that wants to take a, take a stab at it. But again, I like Health Partners because they give you a two-year. As much as you like to see me every month, right? Then I did just diagnostic category, page eleven. So you can see the top one. Hopefully, with the GLP-1s, we'll see that go down. But there's certainly a lot of dollars being in, in the chronology. Number two on your list is we're in the replacement generation. Going to get a new knee, new hip, new shoulder. I'm going to be on that cruise ship dancing my life, right? Very common Asian population, very common in the center.
Does insurance help with the cruise?
We've got to talk to the bottom at April.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as you're on your way to a, a medical procedure.
We'll have to make that.
Yeah. It'll help you dance, though.
Yeah, there you go.
Medical and pharmacy spend on page twelve, just showing you the areas and where you spend your dollars. Again, I'm not seeing huge inpatient charges here. You know, you got outpatient. I would expect you to have high emergency department visits because you don't have really an urgent care. At least the last time I was here, it is, you still don't have them. One of the big things that's occurring right now, and I don't know if anybody in the room has heard about this, but direct primary care, the subscription-based model, is not only emerging, it's, it's in Iowa. And there are several clinics where employers, if it makes sense geographically, they contract with a direct primary care provider. Typically, the direct primary care provider was in a large healthcare system, which is built on fee-for-service, and they are burned out, if you've heard that, health providers. So they've created their own little ecosystem where they tell employers, and we tell employers and educate them, if you go to this clinic, you don't have to, you don't want to, but if you do, you pay zero. So Exemplar IV, they launched their own health plan last year called Aplos. And the foundation of that plan is, is that if it makes sense geographically, they have members go to that direct primary care physician. You can get your lab work, your x-rays, your, all your preventative. It serves as an urgent care center, they stock medications, so generic medications. People love it. And so we're not so smart, we made it up, we're not experimenting on you, we just don't have anybody in the area. So I've been working with Exemplar and several other direct primary care providers. There's thousands across the country right now. Iowa's been a little slower to adapt, but that's something to keep on your radar as these direct primary care.
So I have a question about that.
Yes.
Do they have a facility? Do they rent a facility? Does the, would the county provide a facility and then they would work out of that?
There's, there's all kinds of things that you can do with those. If it makes enough sense geographically, we've seen DPC set up shop for maybe two or three days a week. If there's enough headcount, right? They typically need to have six to eight hundred patients in their panel before they're to fly. Hy-Vee is obviously going after their golden circles, which is, you know, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Des Moines, they have four. So you may have heard of Doctors Now, that's another DPC that's. But I would love it to figure out a way to get a DPC in this area. Okay, so, and we work with aggregators so that some people don't live in the area and they say, well, that doesn't make sense to me. So we're, we've been able to tie, aggregator is, we're able to tie other DPCs throughout the country. So we have One Pella, Davenport, Strong Iowa of all places, way up there in Northwest Iowa, if you knew where that is, right? And then you've got foreign Des Moines with Exemplar Care, Omaha, Kansas City, the building went out in Minneapolis. So, and they got Poreville, one in Cedar Rapids. So I think it's coming to a theater near us. I mean, Brunel would make sense to have a DPC, so, but this corner here would also make sense. So that's something that's just in the back department, sorry, took us down. I want to make sure I talked about that as a strategy. Questions near site and onsite? Page thirteen, just breakdown of the medication spend. I do think the long run is going to favor you for covering those medications at the top. The ones that I have asterisk, that's a word, those are those specialty medications, single-source biologics. Don't have a huge amount, I mean, twenty-six percent of your population is, you, you have other medications that are on there. And I think that's the top two that are scaling that. Typically, what we'll see is a very small percentage of, of your population is driving most of your cost on these special drugs. So yes, you've got a few on there, but you also have done something a little bit different than most. I talked about your endocrinology, if you see those popping up there. Starting at Jardiance. There's a, there's a pattern. Hopefully, there's going to be some relief on the way.
At least the. It's for thirteen.
It's part of that answer that.
Are these, is it categorized by?
Yes. Then we're showing you that, we show you the top by the volume of numbers and then we just show you what the per script is.
Okay.
So I can say.
No one's using you? Oh, yeah.
I think that one, the same one with the levonorm, but I believe that that's.
And that can also be a.
A whiskey.
That appetite, you know, so.
Yeah. See that, just saying normal, I see, see that as a, you know. Honestly, it's very small.
Managing people's.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, there's a, an omnipresence, these medications, that they're figuring out. People are drinking less, they're eating less, they're less depressed, and so, yeah, this.
Which one is that? Just be what it is.
That's a great point. Then page fourteen, we thought it'd be good to just. Uh, then page fourteen, we thought it'd be good to just show you how you stack up against the private sector and the public sector and. So there's a reason why maybe your plan's a little bit more expensive, A, it's grandfather, B, it's really rich benefits. And say grandfather has a lot to do with it, actually, if you're, you're an exclusive company there, you cover certain things. That's driving some of those costs up, not being. Founded by these large, large plans we're seeing, thank goodness. So I think we'd like to see the intensity down a little bit, because sometimes intensity can drain your reserves. But just showing you your deductibles, where your co-payments are at, you have a. Reason why it says NA and co-payment, you charge twenty percent for an office visit, which I like, because you're keeping up with inflation, you're leveraging trend, right? Twenty percent of a dollar eight, that's eight percent. More this year is, was twenty percent of a hundred dollars last year. Same thing on your prescription drugs. People are responsible for paying their deductible and their coinsurance. I did the same thing for dental and then. Where it gets even more interesting is showing you. Again, the economic development of your plan on page fifteen. So if you see the employee contribution. Versus what you see in other public bodies. Again, you can make the comparisons of the richness of your plan design on the previous page to justify perhaps a higher cost. And yes, it's being skewed because your, the amount of the game's a little hot, forty-one percent above year over year. So while we'll get that to calm down, especially since you're having a lot of large claims. But that being said, I think it's prudent to just look at the employee contributions versus what you see of other public administration. Guys have been really good at funding your plan, projecting for the future. Again, knowing that you're a little hot out of the gates at this point, on page sixteen, showing you. Probably down about fifty-four thousand dollars off of your, your, that's gone into your reserves at this juncture. Hopefully that will improve. Next page demonstrates why you guys do a good job at funding, because the insurance carriers, you're outsmarting the. Underwriters, they would have projected you at a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar loss, so you guys have, again, you've funded well. You built a good rainy day fund. And then you're about ninety-seven percent of what we call the aggregate, so. David, you pointed it out, you had a really big October. Yeah. But overall, we're, again, eight to ten percent, and if this is what I'm projecting. Not changing anything.
Any questions?
Is that, is that eight to ten percent, is that also to refill reserves, is that part of why it's eight to ten, or is that just for the normal?
Just, just saying that is, yeah, we'll, we'll measure that, but yes, I would say that, that would be to, yeah. At least plan for, based on where you're at, if you're doing nothing, just an eight to ten percent increase. Most of the money you spend is your money.
Right.
Right, so. Do you have your card handy? You know? I do not, that's okay.
I'm giving you, I'm giving you permission.
I'm gonna give you mine. Did you text me your? I have about everything I can, I, you know, that's okay. I, I was in the goodie class this morning, because I'm doing these today, I'm like, I need to grab cards. Great, there's mine, you would text me. Yeah, your info, yes, I want to talk to you about a couple of things offline.
Sure.
So I guess you might be. You know, it's actually right after this meeting, I mean, I usually have my cards with the screen, that's the doubt. Hey, sometimes I run out too.
That's true.
Thanks.
There's a little action there.
It's not a lot of data. An update.
Okay.
Thanks for. All right, yeah, I'm open. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, like, great to see you.
I can see those glasses.
I have that as a survival kit, thanks. Right? I'll text you and that'll be, all right.
Sure.
Good to see you.
See you too.
See you.
Thank you for all the guys, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Enjoy the seventies on Thursday.
We'll do that. Well, golf.
That's your excavator maybe? Discussion and possible action to evidence.
I might just have your approval to put that in the paper, it's gonna run for two weeks in December, and then all except it's on January four. I'd grant pass those two, what else? Shouldn't it be?
With the motion that we defer the authority to. Post it in the newspaper, and what days did, or do you have, does it matter what age?
I'd say it's on the publication I sent you.
Did you have to have the competitive? Language?
That's the end of the, you have two steps.
So it's all, it's all, it's all up to date, great. It's a motion and second.
Yeah, up to second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's, what's in carries? Discussion and possible action to.
See you.
Open account at Toledo State Bank for EMS account and transfer EMS funds from Lincoln Savings Bank to Toledo State.
He's not answering, so I'll talk to her, um, so she. Would like to, she's switching the accounts from Lincoln Savings Bank back over to the Toledo Bank, due to some issues that she ran into. So she was hoping to give the EMS account over to the Toledo State Bank, but she's gotta have a new account before she can do that.
Just open a new.
Just open a new account, yep.
So it's not interest rate, it's issues that is the reason for it?
If I remember correctly, it's due to, um. Travelers and stuff would be accumulated on these accounts, that's why we're switching.
Make a motion that we approve to open account. Toledo State Bank for the EMS account transfer those funds from Lincoln Savings to Toledo State Bank.
I'll second it. Second it. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yep, so then opening that account, we have to have signers on there, so it'd be Amanda, the treasurer, or assistant, which would be Sarah Gilbert, and then myself.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
And then second it to the treasurer, treasurer assistant and auditor. And signers for Toledo State. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action on the.
That's a report that I have to do annually, it just shows what was in that, that service or TIF account. What we paid out, and then we made, so it's. But into TIF, what we paid out, and so.
If I have any questions?
Is, is this something that went through the, the federal government for people that have farming inside the cities or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Really.
Great.
It's just for.
What we said before.
Yep, this is just for TIF, for. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. That two have accepted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution eleven, ten, twenty, twenty-five A's. Um, to prove a moratorium on data mining and projects in Tama County. Something that Heather worked on, sent over, and there are a couple of other counties, bigger counties that are. Needing to, they, they're putting a moratorium in place on. On these topics due to no regulation at this federal or state level. That we are aware of, and so to protect our interests in, you know, the other counties and leaking the way the. And they even have some of these projects going in, so. Getting needing to write their, so, until we have. Or, ordinance in place, playing it out, connections and those kind of things. And questions on them. Can do. Start with. And sleep. Is this something that? When we do get ready for the, go to the board adjustments. To write. All the others.
Then it come back to us to approve.
Yeah. What I heard on the, particularly on the data mining, is that it has a lot to do with the use of water, the huge amount of.
Water and energy, like.
Well, the energy is, is, is the one that everybody knows about, the, the amount of water that is being used. Uh, and how, how it's being returned back into the environment rather than.
Right. That's what I was worried about, like, do we even have enough, like, we prepared, there's just so much to learn about it. And for data centers, Johnson County's the one that just did the moratorium, that's Corleville, out of the city. Area, they just did that last week, Clark County. Uh, has a moratorium, Lynn County, they're actually going to consultant to put together more, like, an ordinance for them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Jackson County's a moratorium, so for the data centers, I was like, we're not the first, at least there's others doing it, they're bigger. Than us, so, but we need that comprehensive land use plan first, and then that'll help us. As well as zoning to learn about data centers, I know Grundy, Grundy has one, you know, I know they have one already.
Years ago, that one caught fire.
Yeah, yep.
Takes a lot to put those out.
Yep.
And it's kind of like the electric car, it takes up to twenty thousand gallon water just to put it out. And at that point, you might as well fill up a big dumpster and dump the car and it's blown out. If you actually transport it to a junkyard, it can still reignite.
Yes.
So I would consider. It goes through the lives, I need to put out a little cornfield. And they're just out there, it looked like a giant hoop building, and just sitting there.
Yeah, I think that one uses more electricity than the whole city of Grundy, I think, or something, right?
I, I mean, that was, that was about a year or so ago when I heard that, I heard, yeah, I'm prepared that out my thought, so. But it'd be, it's. Look, look into what you guys said.
I'll make a motion of accept the resolution eleven dash ten. Twenty twenty-five A.
I'll second.
Hello?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Can I?
Aye.
Owen? Go back to talk.
Emma, can I ask what was, was in motion?
It was for the resolution eleven, ten, twenty, twenty-five A. For, for the.
Moratorium.
Moratorium.
Data sites, data, data mining incentives, yeah.
This one is on battery storage. Eleven, ten, twenty, twenty-five B, resolution establishing and is definite moratorium on battery storage projects in Tama County. Uh, it's the same, same issue. So that we can get a. Use plan in place before we. Approve any kind of ordinance moving forward. And so this is another one that's not regulated, the state.
I think Lynn Johnson and Al McKee have done, they actually might have some ordinances out there, so once someone looks at it, they can look at those.
I, I do have a question. This talks about. Of any size. It's more. All proposed battery storage facilities, regardless of size, technology, location, they're not currently permitted or under construction. So I'll just pick on one of our, our trust, if. If one of our people has a huge, uh, solar array and destroyed, is that going to affect this, is this going to affect, I can't give it out. Put this in place. Not that I'm going to, just, rest, you know, if I decide, hey, I'm looking at the solar array, and I need the batteries to store the data, or the power, because I'm not using it immediately.
Yeah, I think the moratorium would be, they would just come to zoning administrator us, and we can always release it for residential or for, you know. I, I think it's just an overall moratorium, for anybody gets anything, because otherwise they could just go out and do it. And what if there's repercussions to a neighbor over the fence line or?
Probably one thing too, that'd be a big part of the ordinance's size of.
Yeah, that's something they need to put together.
Yeah, because I, I know, like, when I was looking at the, at solar, I also looked at Tesla battery storage.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the question I had, that's approved. Product.
You would think that would have, the ordinance would have to be to enable sizes like that, opposed to the big, enormous ones, but.
Yeah, I know, I agree, like I said, I don't, I don't think you need to. Use back these days, that'll be, go through an ordinance.
And I think, uh, for the phase two project, I believe, I can't remember if it's one of our neighboring counties, if it's Marshall, or. One of them is actually, has a request for battery storage in a different county, so for the wind projects here, there's currently not battery storage that's being requested. So at least we can get an ordinance in place, see what they do, um, I think it's like right outside the county, I just can't remember which direction, but.
I'll make a motion that we. Through the resolution eleven dash ten dash twenty twenty-five B, moratorium on battery storage projects in Tama County, Iowa. So.
Good, it's been moved, second. Any other questions?
Owen? And that's. Level?
Nice.
The one, that's that, or?
So, possible action to review variance, approval from the Board of Adjustment for candidate parcel.
You guys asked earlier, do you have a map?
I need a map, yeah, I just want to see it.
It's at the Flat Brook Lake. Flat Brook Lake.
I just want to see it.
Yep, I was just letting you know.
This is the house, the addition's gonna be right here.
Okay.
Um, and there's your parcel line, she did get, uh. A letter from her neighbor that was okay with her addition, and the, um. Cooperative holding company up there was also okay with it, so.
Okay, so it's, it's right, come right up that.
Here-ish, there.
That is probably, you know, it's that, okay?
Yep. This is just on the outside.
Maybe I should.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too.
So I, my pen didn't work at all, that's right.
It's in the shadow of the house. Yeah.
There's your panel right there. It's cheap, all, all neighbors deal with it.
Yeah, so there's no complaints, no.
Objections, no complaints, um, the neighbor was fine with it, the company was fine with it, a lot of people came to support her.
But since it wasn't on the neighbor's property, no easements needed, it's just like budding up closer to it, right, then our ordinance allows. What's the map look like, where's it at from long?
It's just a shadow area, it's here.
Okay. That's the neighbor there.
Yeah, the addition, I think you're like ten by ten, was what they had on their application.
Yeah, because in the, in the Iowa code, it actually says we may, but I'm like, in my mind. I'd like to at least look at them, and we can always decide, do we want to prove or not, do we not, or eventually do we want to put an ordinance around it?
And then along those lines, like you said, we don't have anything in our ordinance, but the state code allows for you to review that, and since I, I thought it'd be better safe than sorry to bring it to you.
Right.
For variance, so if we want to add that to our ordinance, I can work on that too, I can be part of our discussion today. Because, yeah, in, in the code, if it says that you may do it, and you don't have it in. Because, yeah, in in the code, if it says that you may do it, and we don't have it in our ordinance, that you guys want that. I I mean, there could be an argument that we don't. We bring it to you unless we have it in our, so. There's something to clarify.
We could, we could call it up. We have the ultimate authority, it's saying, on the Board of Adjustment or the zoning board to determine whether we're going to review it. It's up to us. If we wanted to take that. I think that's why it's.
So do we want to add something to our ordinance that that does? Because that's something that got added, and we've revised our ordinances forever.
Mm hmm.
Um. And like a process for doing that where we just notify you that there was one, if you're bringing it, or if you just pay attention to what public notices are.
Yeah, I think if we wouldn't, I mean, if there's something that we get, sure, it gives us the authority to.
Or do you want me to bring everything to you?
Before the board.
I think the question is, should we amend the the ordinance in the variance section to say code three thirty five point one oh two, that it may be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors? I think you can do different amendments, and there's, as the Iowa code updates things, like there's auxiliary dwelling units, there's things that they just are approving or have approved. Um, I saw another county where they just do an ordinance and they amend the ordinance instead of going in and touching that nineteen ninety eight right now, because that'd be, there'd be thousands of things to do. You can just do these amendments, and then those are just listed kind of down below. So I guess I'm I'm never opposed if things are in Iowa code, we probably should put it in the ordinance. That way, if someone doesn't know, they come in new and they're looking at just their ordinance, they would know, you know, like, whether it's supervisor, whether it's a board adjustment, whether it's a zoning. But I guess they can always take action on that in different, maybe if that's what we need to do, but.
Yeah. And there's not, there's not many in a year.
Yeah, it won't be that many.
I would like to see it, just bring them all to us.
Yeah, so maybe you bring in your recommendations, we can. Future board meeting to.
Just change the word from made to shall.
Or it's been habit in.
Just in there at all. It's not even in there.
Due to the code allowing us to everything to come through, all the variances to come to the. So then, uh, the way it's worded is that you can remand it back to the Board of Adjustment if you don't agree with it. Um, otherwise, I I don't think you guys take any action aside from this saying.
Yeah, I think.
No, we're made.
So we didn't have to take any action to be.
And I I mean, since we don't have it in our ordinance, if we have it in our precedent, I didn't have any kind of form for you to sign or anything. So I think if you just vote, it'll be okay, and then I'll let the advocate know that she's okay to move forward with her applications.
Mm hmm.
I made it. What's the motion? To accept it, basically to accept or approve adjustments already done on that variance.
Okay.
Move that second and any other discussion. All those in favor say aye. Question period. At the end. Discussion and approval of claims. Of the claims here. I guess we're making up for last week. Low amount. We've got uh two 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 comma three four two period ninety nine, so two hundred twenty two thousand three hundred forty two dollars and ninety nine cents in flames. And I'm too worried if it's just like it came from the engineer buying stuff, he bought coal, but yeah, coal versus stuff like that. So they're they're necessary. So I make the motion to be approved, I don't know.
Close example.
Go ahead. Take it out.
All right, I said.
If it was five dollars, everyone beaten fight.
All those in favor say aye. Comments again?
Yes, um, first off, I would like to thank all of you for discussing things so that we know what's going on. Um, taking time to look at all of these things and comment on them and have good discussions and allowing us to ask a question to the pertinent people that are involved, because they go offline or they walk back out of the room. And uh any considerations that you give to the spending, we appreciate that in the public. And I know you guys wonder why there aren't a lot of people that come to these meetings, but it's because of what's been going on in the past. It's been addressed to me um as to why aren't more people here. And in the past, that wasn't very welcome. So that's my explanation as to why so few still show up and kind of speak for other people that call us or that we interact with on a daily basis. So I hope that that clarifies that a little bit. So are people afraid to come in? I've heard that from other people in here that the other side is afraid to address issues. Well, it is true that the people that are residents of this county are afraid that they will be reprimanded and that there will be severe consequences. And and I'm not gonna say I'm not afraid of that sometimes. I am, however. Um, I'm old, so it doesn't really matter anymore. You know, I I just believe in the Bible. So thank you very much. Stacy Zeman would like to speak.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yep.
Great. I I want to apologize for not being in person. I am doing payroll for seventy people this morning. I've been listening all morning like I do every week. Um, I realize you all received an email from me last week, and I want to appreciate Mark's quick response. He reached out, he investigated. I couldn't be happier with that, because that's never happened in the past before with the past council, so thank you. But I am gonna read my response to Mark, just because I want everybody to realize, um. I do realize there's an issue with the treasurer's office. Uh, frankly, I feel that Amanda is using the disclaimer on the back of the pay stub, the property tax stubs to shield employees who did not feel the responsibilities. Whether the parcel was listed under my maiden name, my married name, any name, should be irrelevant when the county issue printed stub that was mailed to that taxpayer clearly identifying those properties were physically provided by the taxpayer to the treasurer's office. Todd personally handed those stubs in for each property. I went through them, because sometimes Todd does not remember that like he should, so I made sure they were all there. I mean, I could understand if an oversight, if no documentation was presented, because my home brokerage is in the last name of Shope. My late husband and I bought that, and part of me will always be a Shope, and I will never change that. That's just for me and my kids. So I can understand there being an oversight if the documentation was not presented to the people working in the office, but that was not the case here. Uh, Mark mentioned in his response that over eight hundred tax notices were mailed and and if any errors occurred on the employee side, such as mine, I believe the appropriate course of action would be acknowledge the mistake, apologize, and waive those penalties. In any other business, accounting errors are addressed to maintain customer trust and satisfaction. Failing to do so would cost them the customers. As a taxpayer and a homegrown Tama County person, I will never leave the county, and I will continue to contribute to the county on the tax roll. And honestly, uh, we did talk, and we will pay what's due with those penalties, because that is the way Amanda's dug her feet in. But my faith and confidence in that treasurer's office and their abilities has been completely eroded. It also raises the question, if multiple taxpayers such as myself encountered similar issues, is that why things like this are not being addressed? Is are there people afraid to bring it forward? And when is the treasurer herself held accountable for the performance and the training of her staff? What oversight exists to review her effectiveness as a supervisor to those employees? Like I said, um, we'll be paying it, but we will be paying taxes on our time, considering Todd gave up a half a day to visit the treasurer's office, to gather the combine, to make those payments in a timely place. Uh, thank you for listening. I'll be quiet now. Thank you. If you're talking to me, sorry, Mark, I can't hear you.
She can.
Hey, I, there, stop.
Thanks, Ty.
I heard Hilmer for about two seconds, so start talking. I think I I think you guys are coming. Perfect. Thumbs up, guys. I'll be quiet now.
How about now, Stacy?
Perfect.
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 Um. So by the time I got your response from your email on Friday, I couldn't put it on the agenda. So do I not need to put this on an upcoming agenda item?
I will leave it up to you five as if this is something you need to look at, as maybe I'm a one-time incident. Or with uh with the amount of tax delinquency notices that went out, that maybe there are others. If more people come forward with issues like mine, I say it definitely needs to be agenda item. But I just wanted to voice my concern, so if there's other little people like me, so to speak, out there, they're gonna come forward. That's pretty much it. But thank you very much, Mark. I appreciate it.
See. See, I understand. Talking about, I didn't get it put on the agenda because it wasn't kindly enough, and so. We can work. To, as far as the question on oversight, she's a duly elected official. The the oversight is the polling booth, essentially. Okay. Uh, other public comments? Go ahead, Jim.
To you with the supervisors or being proactive on this data center battery storage subjects, and I've been following the uh incident in Johnson County, but Fairback uh data center. And it seems like there's a lot of correlation between what's happened there and what's happened in Tama County in the past year. The uh the uh people in charge of the data center filed for an application early on, and it was accepted by the supervisors. And they neglected to put anything in the application concerning uh drilling wells and well water usage, which is a big factor. But the application was accepted, and then the county supervisors put a moratorium on this so they could research it, similar to like what we did winter. Well, then, you know, we went in front of a district judge, and they said, well, that is a trivial thing. And so he accepted their application, and it proceeded. Well, the district judge works for the state, and they follow what the state wants, I would assume. I think that would affect their decision. And I think the same thing is gonna happen in Johnson County with this data center. And now all the people in this county are looking at electrical rate increases and water usage increases. And it's it's a mess. And uh it's a lot similar to what was happened in Tama County over the last year. And I'm just trying to use a little foresight, see what's gonna happen on that. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
Good. Now that would be pertinent to Tama County. Uh, I was going to put a house on a lot across the street from me, and there was a moratorium on water, or new water services across for a year. I mean, it was a year out. And uh it's been close to five thousand dollars, uh, just as an oversight. And that figures in when you're putting a house in for your profitability and those kind of things. And so we already don't have enough water for all of our residents.
Right.
Or developers.
Easily.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that we have enough water, if that's going to be the the issue.
Um, I, and also I was kind of wondering, uh, what the SaaS was with Salt Creek Two. Uh, are they still looking for a buyer for that project? Is that where it's at right now?
I I don't know. Um, I know that they're going to have a hearing on the substation with the Board of Adjustment in the next month, I think.
Okay. I could say something else. Uh, it seems that these wind turbines are already becoming obsolete and solar panel fields, because these data centers, and everybody seems to want a data center. Or they want to install one everywhere, the government does. And they require a minimum of five hundred megawatts of electricity on a continual basis, you know, whether the wind's blowing or it's cloudy outside and during the darkness, solar panels don't work too well. But they require constant five hundred megawatt uh electrical usage. So this, like this Salt Creek Two, it it'll put out one hundred megawatt. Well, that's only one fifth of the electricity required to run one data set. So they're looking for bigger uh general electrical generation facilities to put out more output and constant output. So. And so now they're looking into small solar plants and natural gas plants and other other things, but.
Did you mean nuclear?
Uh, yeah, nuclear is smaller.
Smaller solar plant would.
Yeah, and small nuclear plant. Excuse me.
So please, you.
Yeah.
Did, see, there's a funding deal though.
Assume that's why they're such a random open Dwayne Arwha.
Maybe I push back to Dwayne.
Yeah, well, yeah, either they're gonna need a lot of power and not passive.
And nuclear has its smallest carbon footprint, so.
Thank you.
Good.
To add to what Jim was talking about, um. So Next Era is is a primary owner of the nuclear plant over by Cedar Rapids Palo. And of course, we hear their name all the time in conjunction with turbines. And then, um, the the power sheet water thing, we really owe a a big debt of gratitude to Dan Anderson for keeping tabs on that when in his tenure last year, because he was all over the future of our water usage versus drought versus lack of rainfall. And he did it. He he really, he made a lot of enemies when he did that, when he put water restrictions on, because it affects a lot of people and you, as you just said, signing up for uh future water use that affected us. So, um, kudos to Dan for being right on all over that and just sticking by it. He did good.
It's comforting, I just to know that he was on the board and he was.
He was. Yeah. P W A.
Yeah, still is. So he had that, he had that. You know, but he's willing to share it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's still standing. Is that correct?
No.
No, it's off now?
He's still there, but no.
I don't mean, is Dan?
Yeah, the restrictions lifted.
They lifted, okay.
For the year anyway.
So just so everybody knows, we're also buying water from Cedar Rapids. They were piping it to power sheets.
They always have.
Yeah, but I mean, people don't realize it. Toledo has deep wells, the city, so they've not been affected.
Yeah.
So maybe we should dig some deep wells or buy, make our own water. I'll take sorry.
Can you can wash your car today?
Yeah.
If you want.
Not inside, not outside.
Pretty shut.
Yeah.
I'll get in for a couple days.
And both lanes make enough. On area over there to help with the aquifer.
Mm hmm.
Uh, they used to have one years ago, and I'm not sure how it got dismantled or whatever, but now they're, I think they're gonna be starting up here soon. Just so you know.
Question current on Bell Plain? They have a solar area out there. Um, do they have a uh base storage unit with that?
No, that's my knowledge.
Okay.
Public comments? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a, last week I had a crane across a shared driveway up at my north place between tower number thirty nine, thirty eight. They made some pretty good tracks in there. And uh they got a little bit over on my ground. And I wasn't too happy about it. I'm gonna go over and talk to them about it. I think they should leave that driveway just as good or better than what they were in. I want some support. Mark Golden.
Done? Is is the crane gone now?
Yes, it was. It happened, it just happened by there. There's this app that they got. It's not this tight.
I can meet with you and call or go over with you?
I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Today sometime.
Anybody else? So why we made bad, sorry. Okay, we'll close public comments now. And did we get to everything?
Make the most of it, sort of.
Okay, it's been motion through me. Second it. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Nine fifty eight.